Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, for January 3rd, 2013. Pastor Richard Shelton, if you would, give us an invocation.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Glad you all turned out to see me. And I'm sure you'll be impressed by my humility. Could we stand for prayer, please? Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name in all the earth. The earth is the lords and the fullness thereof, and they that dwell therein. We confess that there's one God and one mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus. We thank you, dear God, for this council of people who have given up their time and energies and talents to lead our community and give direction to the county. I pray that you would bless them with health. I pray for their families and their marriages, that they would not, and their families would not have to sacrifice because of the service that they give to the community. I pray that you would bless their coming in and their going out, their downsetting and their uprising. I pray that you would give them wisdom that comes from above. I pray that they would have clear vision and singleness of purpose as they give direction to our community. I pray, Lord God, that this will be a very productive and a very, um, a very great year for St. Clair County, and that you would just be with them and help them to give of their very best. We ask these blessings now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Who could pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can go right to the oath of office, gentlemen? I'm sorry. Yep, thanks. Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Greatop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Tommian?
Here.
Chairman Bohm, Commissioner. Gentlemen, if you would rise. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of St. Clair County Commissioner in and for the county of St. Clair and the State of Michigan according to the best of your ability?
I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
You guys want to go over here and get a picture at all? Anybody who wants to take pictures?
We're gonna get a stand on the steps for anybody that'd like to take a shot at all.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint a temporary chairperson.
This time, I would move to appoint our county clerk, Jada Boyer, as a temporary chairperson. Support?
I will accept nominations and the election. Sorry, let's run through a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Accept a nomination for the permanent chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to place the name of Jeff Bohm in nomination for permanent chairperson.
Second?
Support?
Name of Jeff Bohm has been submitted.
Any other nominations?
Yeah, is there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I move that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast for Jeff Bohm to be chair.
Support?
With that, Jeff Bohm is nominated as chairperson. I can turn it over to you now.
Okay. I would like to have nominations for the vice chair, please.
This time, I'll nominate Steve Samasko for vice chair.
I would second that.
Any other nominations? We'll close it. Steve is...
I move that a, uh, that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast for Steve Samasko to be vice chair.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, moving on. Item number eight, additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Seeing none, do I have an approval of the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda as presented. Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number 10, the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Item 10, I'd like to move this time that the minutes of December 13th, 2012, commission meeting be approved and filed.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any citizens wishing to address the commission at this time? Are there any citizens? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item number 12, the consent agenda, items number A through D.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve items 12A through 12D on the consent agenda. Support?
Any discussion on any of these on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number 13, is there any unfinished business to come before us? Seeing none. Item number 14, the new business. Item number A, the appointment of Sergeant at Arms. I am going to appoint Howard Heidemann because I know he doesn't want to do it again. But he does a wonderful job at it.
How many seconds do you need?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Appointment two, standing committees. The standing committees are gonna be as follows. Bill Greatop is going to be the Public Safety Judiciary. Dave Rushing is going to be the Ways and Means. Tom Riley is going to be the Human Services. Howard Heidemann is going to be the Environmental. I've got lots of work for Carl, too, so... Item C, the appointments to the board and committee assignments. You have a list that is in front of you that we went over today. If there's some things that don't work for you, just let us know, and we will do our best at making it, you know, convenient for everybody on the board. Okay, we're gonna move on. Item number D, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority County Allocation Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority County Allocation Grant Agreement in the amount of $300,000 and to designate Bill Kaufman and David Struck as authorized seating chores for the said grant.
Support?
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, this is to move it on to the full board, so... All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number E, the Mental Health Court Grants subcontract with Community Mental Health.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the letter of agreement with the St. Clair County Community Mental Health Authority for mental health court services in the amount of $80,000 for a term of 10-1, 2012 through 9-30, 2013.
Support?
Any discussion on this at all? Once again, this is to move this on to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number F, the Solid Waste Planning Committee Appointments. You have a list of names in front of you. There's actually... Well, give me a motion and a...
Okay, I would move the appointment of John Jones for general public position, Tim Ward for general public position, Jeff Volter for solid waste management industry representative.
Do I have a second?
I'll support those nominations.
Okay, there's one person that I would like to add for the city government piece of it is Jason Hammey. He is the city manager of Marysville, and there's actually two other individuals that I have names of. I'm just getting clarification from corporate counsel if they are able to serve in a particular capacity that I'm looking to put them in, so we'll be able to...
I would move the inclusion of Jason Hammey to represent city government.
Support?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number G, Board of Commissioner Bylaws for 2013, 2014.
Mr. Chair, I would move to receive the 2013, 2014 Board of Commissioners bylaws and do forward to the January 17th, 2013 Regular Board Meeting for final adoption.
Second?
Discussion, I need the bylaws.
Just one, I see it was revised on the 3rd of January of this year. What revisions are there? Any prior bylaws?
I don't have an answer.
Is it something that's marked here? Or we don't see a cross-out? It very well could be the board changing their meeting dates to Thursdays from Wednesday?
That was the only change I saw.
That's the only thing that I recall that has been changed over the last two years.
Take a look at it, if there's anything else, bring it back at the full board.
Sure. And if there are other changes that the commissioners would like to have considered, if they could forward those, uh, those comments to administration, and we will see that those are included in a memo to the board, to the full board?
I think for the people that sat on the board last time, I think the Thursday change personally worked out well and all the meeting schedules. Bill?
Bill, maybe you can answer this for me. Section 2.2 says that during the October session, the meeting will be set as set by statute. What's particular about October?
I would say that would be the adoption of the budget, yes, Mr. Heidemann.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number 15, Administrator Controllers Report.
A couple of items that I'd like to share with you this evening, but also keep it relatively brief. First of all, on behalf of all of administration, I would like to congratulate every new and returning board member on their election and swearing in this evening. We look forward to working with you throughout your term, and please do not ever hesitate to contact someone in administration if you have any questions, concerns, or you just like some background on some items that may be coming up. We'd be more than happy to spend as much time as necessary to answer your questions. I received an update today on the 911 Backup Center. You may recall, last month, we reported that we'd be working with Lapeer County. Meetings have been set up. Your director, your 911 director, Mr. Conger, has a meeting scheduled to begin discussions with his counterpart in Lapeer County to act on a mutually beneficial backup 911 center. And just so everyone's clear, the likelihood of the county's center going down is pretty slim. We've discussed that in the past at board meetings, but certainly it's appropriate and necessary that we prepare for such an event. Reports will be provided to the board in the future on how those discussions are going, and when it reaches the point where a formal agreement is necessary between our board and Lapeer County's board, Mr. Conger will be attending your meeting and explain to you what the contents of that agreement are and asking you to act on it at that time.
Can I just add something? Currently, the city of Port Huron is quote-unquote our backup, but I know a lot of their equipment now, if you even talk to Chief Reeves about it, they're not adequate to be the backup currently. And the amount of money, I think we're spending $11,000 a year on that T-line that goes into the city, and everybody from the CDA board agreed to look at three different agencies for the backup. One was Macomb County. They're in the process of building a large facility. Another one was Cerisa, and the other one was Lapeer. And it was overwhelming that the CDA board would like to see us pursue dealing with Lapeer. They have very similar equipment. We currently do their assessing forum, we do their Veterans Affairs. We're talking about the solid waste piece with Lapeer and now the 911. We have perhaps a better working relationship with them, so it seemed to make a lot of sense that they would essentially become our backup, we would become their backup, no cost. It would be a mutual aid agreement between the two because they need somebody also, so...
Late last week, we received notice that the county has been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 2012. That particular certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition that a governmental agency can receive for governmental accounting and financial reporting. It was an independent panel convened to review applications and the county's comprehensive financial report. It measured up against their standards for full disclosure and clear communication of the county's financial situation, as well as its ability to be user-friendly, easy to read and understand. I'd personally like to congratulate the county's entire finance staff for attaining this recognition. Ms. Hazelwood, Ms. Alderdice, and Ms. Hepting as well for allowing this particular agency to receive this award. The convention center activity, this is something that we report on every month in front of you. You just received the monthly financial report. The largest non-property expenditure that you see there is detailed near the bottom. In previous reports, there were some questions about what was included in that item. You'll see that below. The majority of that went to bond and associated property closing costs. If you have any questions about the financial report, please don't hesitate to give our office a call. We've got a lot more detail available to you if you are interested in seeing it. Some other items I'd like to report on is the, what's called the opinion of cost, or the project cost estimate based on the schematic design drawings that you saw last month are currently being developed. We, that particular tool will be used by the architect, by the engineers, and by the construction manager to advise the county on the gives and takes that will be necessary to ensure that the project falls within the county's budget. Once these revised estimates are reconciled, and we're in the process of doing that right now, the schematic design package will be signed off on, and the design phase of the project will begin. And just as a side note, at your last meeting, you approved the schematic design package based on, or pardon me, subject to approval and endorsement by Mr. Dave Greisel of Convergence Design, one of the consultants you've hired, as well as Mr. Kruger of Convention, Sports, and Leisure. They have both endorsed the schematic design package, so the only thing that is standing in the way of signing off on that right now is a recognition of what the current project estimates are. So, and we'll be working on those over the next, uh, the next week and hope to be in a position to sign off on the package within about 10 days. We've begun the process of soliciting proposals for facility management of the convention center. Recent discussions we've had with Convention, Sports, and Leisure, Mr. Bill Kruger, has led to the initiation of that process. The board can expect to hear a lot more in the coming weeks. Our expectations are that the proposals for management of the facility will be in hand very shortly. The Board of Commissioners will be kept abreast at every meeting and probably through emails throughout the next six to eight weeks to let you know where we stand with that, with that process. We have indicated to Mr. Kruger and Mr. Greisel as well that we certainly want them involved in reviewing and analyzing the proposals that are received. As part of Mr. Kruger's contract with the county, he is preparing that RFP on our, on our behalf. Administration will certainly be reviewing that, just to make sure we're familiar with what is expected once we receive those proposals. The franchise agreement between Hilton and JB Real Estate Development has been fully executed. Work continues on the renovation of the hotel property, but as you probably have noticed, most of that's been indoors because you haven't seen much going on outdoors. They did a lot of work this fall to close the facility in, things that needed to be done, roof repairs, as well as some repairs to the outside of the building. That work has been completed. They have now begun work on the inside of the facility. Work has begun on the restaurant as well, and all of you, just by driving by, can probably see the progress that's being made on Baker's Culinary Institute. I did receive notice today that the restaurant, Freighter's, has announced that they'll be recruiting for four full-time management positions. These include two executive chef positions and two dining room manager positions. So if any of you have someone that you may know that might be interested in applying, please keep your eyes peeled on the local paper. You can certainly visit Meritage's website, and we can provide you with email contacts as well if you know someone specifically that might be interested in that position. The last thing that I want to cover, you probably noticed some changes in the Board of Commissioners chamber, primarily in the back. You'll see a window that's been cut through a wall. Looks like it's been there forever. They did a very nice job on it. Our IT staff member that tapes your programs will be moving into that facility very shortly. We will have some new cameras installed that will provide for much better coverage of the meetings. There is some new technology that has been invested in as well that will allow us to communicate much more quickly and much more efficiently with the public, both with these meetings and other activities that may occur in this building. And we'll certainly be sharing more details with you in the future and be talking quite a bit more about how you want to move forward with communicating with your constituents over the next coming year. And that is it.
I have a motion. First of all, any questions for Bill? I have a motion.
One question, Jeff. Bill, the, um, there was a $20,000 difference in costs, the soft cost expenditure from last month to this month. Do you know what that was, just off the top of your head? You listed it in the previous notation, but we spent $20,000 on something. I was wondering what we, what that was spent on, if you know.
I will have to refer that to Ms. Hepting. I know we have been receiving periodic billings from some of the consultants that are involved, CSL as well as Convergence Design. My bet is it was probably one of their billings.
And what is claim on cash, that notation? What is that amount to? So what would, what would be available cash? Something not locked up in a long-term deposit, or what? So you modify that periodically? Do you loosen up some money to put in that account, or? Okay, that's it, thanks.
Any other questions at all? I have a motion, a second, to receive and file administrator's report.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, part of miscellaneous business, we are going to do introductions of family members. Mr. Greatop, if you want to go up there and bring them up. Opportunity to get on TV.
Good evening. Bill Greatop, District 7, which is Elgin, At Clay, Cotterville, Marine City, and Chinatown Township now. Mr. Bohm couldn't handle that China area, so that I inherited it. Lightened his load there, anyway. Few people I would like to introduce tonight. Let me start with my wife, Lori. Lori, would you please stand? This is my wife Lori, and sitting next to Lori, stay standing, Lori. Emma, would you stand up, honey? Emma Churchill. And where's Emma's mom? Kathy, stand up. Kathy Churchill. They came down to support. Right next to Kathy is Tracy Decosson. Tracy, would you stand up, please? Thank you. Tracy works in the sheriff's office on the jail side of things. She's got like the most important position over there, I think, second to maybe the sheriff, maybe? I'm not sure. And anyway, Tom, or Bill, my son Bill, came all the way from South Lyon to be here tonight. My daughter Karen. Karen, would you stand up, please? And last but not least, my granddaughter, Liliana May Tucker. Lily, will you come up here for a minute, please? Emma, if you want to come with her, you can. We're gonna give these kids a chance to be on TV, that's what this is all about.
Oh, yes.
She wants to say hi to her dad.
Thank you.
Okay. David?
Hi, good evening. Dave Rushing, District 6. Have six townships and part of Memphis and one house in Richmond. The townships are Ira, Casco, Columbus, Wales, Riley, and Berlin. Hope I didn't leave one out. But that's who I represent. Don't have as many this time as last time. My wife is here, and I'll remember to say her name this time, so if you please stand. My wife, Sally. Been 38 years in February.
Nice.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Tom Riley, I'm the new commissioner for District 4. Was a commissioner back '02, '04, and decided to throw my name back in again. I want to say it's a pleasure and really to work as a commissioner, and I think it's something that people have to really want to do. I really appreciate my areas, City of Marysville, Port Huron Township, and part of Kimball is who I represent. And they elected me back in to see if I could do something for them, and I will do my best for them, too. Tonight, I want to introduce, first of all, my wife Becky. Now I get to tell you what to do, Beck. You get to stand up. I will say, effective November 3rd, we were married 50 years.
Wow.
And during the 50 years, I got to be honest, she supported me in everything I've wanted to do. There's been times that I went to her and said, you know what, I'd like to do something, and she's there for me. She's my backbone. Next is my campaign manager, Mark Riley. My son, stand up, Mark. Mark just got off Port Huron Township after 12 years serving, and I know that I'll probably hear from him quite a bit because he's always got a lot to say, you know? But Mark is my backbone when it comes to campaigning. Next, Julie, his wife. Julie is... She's just another daughter to me. And Julie was even out helping at the campaign spots for me this year. I mean, she was out. Next to her, Nicole. She was helping Grandma at the polling spots also, so she's right there boosting me also. And right beside Mark is Kevin. Kevin's... I don't know, I think I got another son there. He's campaigning... He talks campaigning a lot. In fact, over the weekend with all the national stuff going on, I heard a lot from those two. They were solving the worlds. But that's my backbone right there, and I appreciate him being here. I have a lot of friends in the audience tonight, but I really appreciate the opportunity to serve again as a Commissioner. Thank you.
Go down there. Commissioner Semasko.
I'll pass.
Okay. Carl.
Good evening. I'm Carl Thomian. I'm the new County Commissioner for District 2. District 2 is all of Birchville Township, all of Fort Grashit Township, and the northern three precincts of the city of Port Huron. And tonight, I have with me my wife Denise. Would you stand up, Denise? Denise is also my campaign chairman and my only campaign worker. She worked tirelessly on my campaign, which I really appreciated. Next to her is her mother, Eileen Suber, if she would stand. And finally, my mother, Betty Thomian. Thank you.
Carl, you've got to stay up there for one second, though, because he just tipped me off earlier today. Today is Carl's birthday. So I think it would be appropriate that we all sing to Carl.
It's my 40th. I can arrange that for you, Carl, if we need to modify.
Happy Birthday to you! Happy Birthday to you! Happy Birthday, dear Carl! Happy Birthday to you!
Well, this has truly been an unexpected pleasure.
Another first, Jeff. Howard?
I'm going to pass, thank you.
And I'm going to take the pass, too. I bought my kids the iPods and eyes this for Christmas, and they'd rather be playing with that thing than being here with Dad, so...
Mr. Chairman, I would not recommend that anyone in this room goes into singing.
Any other miscellaneous business at this time? Mr. Greitop?
Yeah, I just want to, kind of on a sad note, we always kind of take care of our own here in St. Clair County, and Tim and Tammy Deshores lost a 16-year-old daughter in a snowmobile accident. Most of you probably have seen it or read it. And her younger brother, who was driving the machine, is in serious condition in the hospital also. They've got a total of, I think, seven kids in that family. Dad is out of work. He's a builder, but fallen on hard times. They have no medical insurance or anything like that. So I just want to announce that the K-PAC State Bank has set up a trust fund for them, if anybody is interested in helping out. And also, there's going to be a spaghetti dinner benefit on Saturday, January 12th, and that will be at the Father Serrani Parish Hall in Emmett. That's where they're from. And that's sponsored by the KSC, the Emmett Lions, and the Emmett Baseball League. If you need more information, you can just call.
Did you have a time on that?
Yeah.
Saturday the 16th?
Yes, Saturday the 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Saturday the 12th.
12. Saturday the 12th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And if you have any more, if you need questions or anything like that, if you just call up to the county, we'll leave this up here at the... Call the main number up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous? David?
Something short. Hopefully, everybody had a great Christmas, and I'd just like to put a little plug in for the Lennox EMS. We got a call from my father-in-law, my wife's father, and it was on Christmas Day about 5:00 o'clock. He had passed out and broke his hip. And we went over there, they live about three miles from us, and they came over. Ken and Mike, I don't have their last names, but from Lennox EMS, they did an amazing job, got him to the hospital, and we went to the hospital and did an amazing job, so...
Okay. Any other miscellaneous business? Moving on, receive and file.
This time, I'd like to move to receive and file packets that were sent to Commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Second.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 18 adjournments. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.